I'm going to call the meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, February 3rd at 7:00 PM. And Mr. Adho, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solera?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Present.
We are all here. At this time, I'd like you to all stand and join me in the Pledge Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, the one nation, under God, in the best of all, with the very big and just as eternal. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda at all? Okay, we'll move past that. Onto my president's report. So, good evening and welcome to the students, staff, and families from Samuel Bissell Elementary and RB Chamberlain Middle School. Tonight, we will have updates from the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center and administrative report from Mr. Welker, our Director of Business Services, on a program called Safe Routes to School. The program's goal is to promote walking and biking to school. We'll hear more about this Ohio Department of Transportation program and how it might be applied in our district. This past Monday saw a successful high school showcase of our sports, extracurricular, and academics programs, and so much more, with families and students from our middle school viewing over fifty different programs. Thanks to all those that helped with this event. And as for sports, our winter athletes are winding down their season while another group, the Great Expectations Show Choir, is preparing for competition in Indiana this weekend, and we wish them the best of luck. And while we're talking about performances, our very own high school band participated in the 2016 All-Star Band at Kent State University. A very special letter was received at central office from Kent State's Director and Assistant Director of Bands, literally gushing about their outstanding and well-prepared performance. And I'm not doing this special letter justice, so I'll simply extend our Tiger pride to all those students and staff that participated. And another group was on tour last week at our district. Make sure you check out this week's Twinsburg Bulletin online and in print for photos of our local senior citizens taking a look inside our district. There was lunch at Wilcox. I'm not sure if anyone got Lucky Pickle Day. They still do that? But they also viewed many courses at the high school. And, oh, remember GE? They got a performance, they were treated to performance by Great Expectations Show Choir. And now to our patient students from Bissell and Chamberlain. Your time to shine is almost here, I promise. So, without further delay, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Powers for Superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education. Well, it's a packed house again, and we're so delighted that our students and their parents are here to celebrate some great things going on at the middle school and at Samuel Bissell. Before we get to that, I do have a couple of just announcements to make this evening. Board of Education, as you know, February is Black History Month, and so if you visit our district website under my superintendent's message report, all five of our buildings have provided some great insight as to all of the activities that will be happening at our buildings to celebrate the accomplishments of African-American folks, past and present. So, please take a look at that. Lots of great information about activities that will be going on all of the month of February. Mr. Felber, you kind of stole my steam a little bit here with talking about Kent State's letter.
You probably do a better justice.
But I did bring the letter, because I think it's an awesome letter. About a week or so ago, I received a letter from Kent State University's Directors of Bands. And we don't always get these kinds of letters, and so when we get them, they're really something to celebrate. So, I'd actually like to read it to you this evening. It says, "Dear Miss Powers, On behalf of the Kent State University Hugh A. Gloucester School of Music and Department of Bands, we would like to extend our gratitude and congratulations to you and the students from Twinsburg High School for their participation in the 2016 All-Star Band. The two bands consisting of a select group of one hundred fifty of the finest instrumental music students from the state of Ohio were some of the finest groups we have had the pleasure of conducting in the long history of the Kent State University All-Star Band experience. It is always a challenge to create a wind-band concert in only eight hours of rehearsal. The fact that your students came well-prepared is the reason why All-Star Band is so successful. Furthermore, their eagerness to learn, commitment to artistry, and collegial spirit with each other serves as an inspiration and a great reminder of what is good and right in Ohio education. This is a vivid testament to the fine music teaching taking place in Ohio schools, as well as the exemplary character of the students, faculty, and staff who keep music alive and well in our communities. Thank you for allowing us to collaborate with you to give these remarkable students an opportunity to make music together, grow as musicians, and celebrate the triumph of youthful spirit. You honor us by allowing us the privilege to provide a truly unique educational experience for your students that we hope results in a stronger and more inspired musician. Once again, allow us to extend a hearty brava teach you," I'm not sure what that means, "to all for your commitment to excellence in music education, as evidenced by your wonderful students. May this just be one of many memorable experiences for you and your students in this academic year." And it's signed by the Director of Bands, Dr. Jesse Levia, and Assistant Associate Director of Bands, Dr. John Franklin. And I just wanted to let everyone know that here are our students that actually participated. Jake Roberts is a trumpet player. He's a senior at our high school. Erwin Nana, a clarinet player who's a junior. Eric Niesel, trombone player who's a twelfth grader. Laurel Wardell, a flute and piccolo player who's also a senior. Eve Serevenka, a clarinet player who's also a class of 2016. And Opal Kury, our oboe player who's also a senior. So, we are so delighted. We know we have great students here in the school district, and when some prestigious organizations such as Kent State sends the letter to say, "Hey, great job," that really does mean a lot. It goes a long way. So, congratulations to these outstanding high school band students, to Mr. Ryan Bonnetts, who is our band director, Mr. Tom Resnick, who helps with the bands at the lower-grade levels, and of course, a great group of parents that are behind these kids. And really, you know, it takes a long time to grow great skills, and starting when they're fifth graders at Dodge, though that's when band begins in our school district. So, way to go, students. Speaking of another great group of supporters, on this coming Friday and Saturday, we have our TAB wrestling tournament. The TAB wrestling tournament is the premier middle-school wrestling tournament in the state, and our TAB, our Twinsburg Athletic Boosters, have been the sponsors of this particular tournament for many years. So, if you are a wrestling fan, I encourage you to come out either Friday or Saturday all day. It's going to be a great event over at Twinsburg High School. Also next week is a special week. It's called Say Hello Week, and notes nothing about Adele or Lionel Richie.[443.12][443.12](Laughter). As part of our PBIS initiative, Say Hello Week is about anti-bullying and reaching across the aisle and making a friend with somebody who you might not have even talked to before. And our students will be engaged in this all the way from preschool to grade twelve in Say Hello Week, and that is next week. We look forward to a really great event for all of our students. Also, parents, next week on Thursday, we have a very special program for you. This flyer will actually be posted tomorrow on Flyer Central, and our young elementary students will be bringing it home. We're proud to partner with Summit County Sheriff's Department Steve Berry and also Twinsburg Police Chief Chris Noga to present a really important presentation, an important topic, an important point of conversation for you to have with your children about making good choices, and about the fact that sometimes when, especially our teens, are pressured to get into activities that are not so good, that there are repercussions that potentially are lifelong repercussions. And so Sheriff Berry contacted me a number of months ago and had this idea about bringing this program to Twinsburg High School. We're very proud to do that in cooperation with the Twinsburg Police Department. Again, it's next Thursday, February 11th, at seven o'clock at the Twinsburg High School Auditorium. Even if you don't have a student at the middle or the high school, I encourage you to come out and participate in the presentation. There will be an opportunity for a question-and-answer period with Sheriff Berry and with Chief Noga, and it should be a really very important evening for our parents. A reminder, I don't think I probably have to remind our students, but next Friday is a day off from school, and Monday is President's Day, so it's a nice, long, see, we're celebrating in the front row here. A nice, long holiday weekend, and so I'm sure our students will remind their parents, but just in case they don't, there's the reminder. And then Mr. Felber mentioned our senior citizen buster. I have to tell you, it was a phenomenal day. We had the best time with our seniors. They were so interested in what we do in our school district, and they reminisce about how school has changed. An example, we had the seniors up in Lauren Fanning's classroom over at the Dodge, and they were looking through microscopes, at fruit flies, and all kinds of things. It was so much fun. And then they had lunch at Wilcox, and just were all about the business of really being interested in how schools look today on the inside. So, we were delighted to host them. They're looking forward to a second annual senior bus tour, so if you are a senior citizen and interested in joining us, I hope that you keep that in mind. And I'm working with Laura Seeford over at the Twinsburg Senior Center to get that on the calendar for next year. So, thank you. If you're a senior and you were with us, we had a blast. We hope you did too, and it was just a lot of fun. So, that was a great event for everybody included. So, speaking about having a blast, I know our kids at Bissell have a great time every single day, and I'd like to invite up to the podium today, Mr. Winter, who is here, and he is going to present some information about some outstanding Bissell Tigers. So, Mr. Winter, welcome.
How are you? Great. Can you believe it's sixty degrees today, huh? My goodness, for February 3rd, that's crazy. But it's going to snow tomorrow, so I hope you enjoyed it today.[651.38][651.38](Laughter). So, tonight, we are going to recognize some wonderful students and some wonderful staff members. So, we're going to start by recognizing our Students of the Month. So, students, when your name is called, come on up. Thank you, Mrs. Powers. The Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement in grades second and third. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academic, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set this student apart from their peers. We would like to proudly acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. Heidi Bryan from Mrs. Holliday's class.[700.01][700.01](Applause). Now, something, Kayden, don't go away just yet, Bud. Come on up here next to Heidi, all right? Now, something funny about Kayden, he and I were talking about a week ago, and actually, he just got back from Hawaii. And now he's Student of the Month, so what a great month he's having.[753.44][753.44](Laughter). But the funniest thing that he said to me, as I said, "Oh, I'll see you tomorrow," he was like, "No, no, I'm going to Hawaii tomorrow." And he said the worst part about it was he had to wake up at 4:45 to catch the flight, but he assured me that he practiced the day before, so he would be ready for the flight. So, I hope you had a great time, Kayden. Moving on to Maduskin Leskovic from Mrs. Schmidt's class. And Jackson Simmerson from Mrs. Labus's class.[792.82][792.82](Applause). And in third grade, Lane Conway from Mrs. Rinallo's class.[811.32][811.32](Applause). Macy Cornhoff from Ms. Gadson's class.[828.57][828.57](Applause). Nora Creamer from Mrs. Cardeman's class.[842.82][842.82](Applause). And Megan McKee from Ms. Belinski's class.[853.44][853.44](Applause). All right, let's give these fabulous kids another round of applause.[865.57][865.57](Applause). And kids, if you want to turn your Student of the Month certificates around so your All right, how about one more round of applause?[907.82][907.82](Applause). Every time I'm up here and we talk about staff members of the month, you know, I must say, I've been a part of the Samuel Bissell staff now for thirteen years, and we do have the greatest staff. And, you know, it's always so difficult when we have to choose just one or two for the Staff of the Month, because we have so many great staff members to choose from. So, I just want to thank them for coming out tonight, for supporting, you know, the school, supporting our kids. And our first staff member of the month is Mrs. Julia Schmidt. Mrs. Schmidt, come on down.[953.32][953.32](Applause). And Mrs. Schmidt was actually nominated by a few, excuse me, staff members, and they wrote, "We would like to nominate Julia Schmidt as Employee of the Month. Julie works so hard every day with a smile and enthusiasm. Julie has worn many hats at Bissell and always welcomes any new challenge that comes her way. She enjoys working with students, and it shows. We feel we are fortunate to work with such a special person each day." And that was written by Angie Rinallo and Emily Depew, who are third-grade teachers at our building. And she also got another nomination from Kate Killian, who also is a third-grade teacher, and she wrote, "I would like to nominate Julia Schmidt as Staff Member of the Month. Mrs. Schmidt is always in high spirits and willing to jump in to help others. She truly cares about her students and always has a positive attitude. She goes above and beyond what is expected of her. Samuel Bissell Elementary is truly blessed to have Mrs. Schmidt a part of their family. Thanks for all you do, Mrs. Schmidt." And our second staff member of the month is Mrs. Nicole Muller.[1032.73][1032.73](Applause). And Mrs. Muller was also nominated by a few staff members, Ms. Belinski, Laura Dorland, and Jocelyn Rowetter, all who are third-grade teachers at our building. And they wrote, "Nicole Muller is an excellent example of what an amazing teacher personifies, and that is why she is our nomination for Staff of the Month. We have had the honor of listening to Nicole teach her Title I math students each and every day. We see that she is very positive, even under pressure, with having students that are experiencing educational challenges. Her ability to connect difficult math concepts to fun and engaging songs has allowed the students to further grasp these standards. We are always impressed on how she shows enthusiasm when she teaches, even though some math cops, excuse me, some math concepts, we know for sure are less than exciting. Therefore, with all of her wonderful qualities as a teacher and colleagues, she has made lasting relationships with each and every student that walks into her classroom. She is constantly sharing creative activities from her teachings to the whole staff here at Bissell. She even co-hosts the Make-A-Take-It workshops with her Title I reading colleagues to make the home and school connection even stronger. She and her other co-hosts of the workshops produce many creative motivational activities to help parents with math and reading strategies and techniques, so they can in turn continue to help their child at home. We are extremely thrilled to nominate Nicole Muller for Samuel Bissell Elementary School Staff of the Month, and we feel very privileged that she is a part of our team." Now, as Superintendent Powers mentioned, there are a lot of great Black History Month activities going on in our district, and at Bissell, we have a lot of activities going on. So, I'm just going to take a second just to talk about what we have going on before I ask Mrs. Cardeman and her kids to come on up and share what they've been doing in the classroom for Black History Month. So, school-wide, at Samuel Bissell, we have two main activities that we're doing. The first is Black History Month Bingo. And what that is, is each morning, there's a clue about a famous or influential African-American throughout history, past or present, and each class gets a blank bingo board. And what they do is then they put in all the different names in any order that they want, and then as the clues are read, they certainly mark off who the person was, and when they get four in a row, they call down to the office and say they had bingo. And the purpose of that is to start some conversation in the classroom, because we only give a very little snippet of what that influential African-American person did. And the idea is that in their classrooms, they are incorporating that into their discussions, getting reading materials from the library about it, looking at websites devoted to those influential people. So, that's one activity we're doing school-wide. The second school-wide activity we're doing is we have posters throughout the building that talk about, once again, famous African-American, past and present, but also famous, or excuse me, important events in African-American history. And students throughout the day are going on a scavenger hunt. And what they're doing is they're going from poster to poster, reading through the important information, and then filling out a scavenger hunt, which then they turn into the office. So, we got a lot of great activities going on for Black History Month, and I'd like to invite Mrs. Cardeman up and her students, because they like to share what they've been
Well, thank you for having us. We're very excited to be here, and we just wanted to share a little bit of what our class did to celebrate Martin Luther King Day. We started off in the computer lab with Mrs. Mold, and she shared some websites and some video clips where the students were able to research and start creating a slide, start designing their own slide with the information that they learned. In class, we read a biography on Martin Luther King and shared our discussions and discussed about our feelings, our questions, some of our thoughts on the Civil Rights Movement and, you know, all the hardships that were faced. And eventually, we ended up taking what we thought and composing some poems. So, we brought to share with you some of the poems that we wrote in class. But before we do that, Nora would like to share her report that she wrote on Martin Luther King.
The Life of Martin Luther King Jr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a short life, but did many important things in it. Martin Luther King Jr. was born in Atlanta, Georgia on January 15th, 1929. Doctor King was told he couldn't play with his friends, because they were white and he was not. In the mid-1940s, Doctor King went to religious colleges in Philadelphia and Boston. Doctor King was admitted to College of College when he was only fifteen years old. In 1953, Doctor King moved to Montgomery, Alabama with his wife, Coretta Scott King. In 1955, when Rosa Parks got arrested for not giving up her bus seat to a white man, Doctor King organized a boycott. Most black citizens in Montgomery refused to ride buses over a year. Because of this, in 1966, the Supreme Court banned segregated buses. Also, in 1956, 1966, Doctor King organized a group of churches dedicated to nonviolent protests for civil rights. Doctor King was inspired by the nonviolent life of Mahatma Gandhi. In this decade, Doctor King led protest marches for African-American rights across the country. The most famous march Doctor King led was the March on Washington, where Doctor King delivered his famous "I Have a Dream" speech. There were over two hundred people there. Doctor King was arrested several times during his speeches, but it paid off. The Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965 overturned segregation. Then, in 1964, he won the Nobel Peace Prize. He is the youngest person to ever have gotten it. Recognized as the Civil Rights Moment later, Doctor King went to fight against poverty after the Vietnam War. After that, sadly, Doctor King was assassinated in Memphis, Tennessee. Months later, his assassin was found, captured, and put in jail immediately. Even though he was only thirty-nine when he was killed, he lived a wonderful life.
Thank you, Nora. Okay, Prithika is going to go ahead and share her poem first.
Perfect peace. Peace is like a perfect world. Peace looks like tears of joy. It sounds like the ocean's wonderful waves, and it can be rough and hard sometimes, but peace is always peacefully perfect.
And Ryan?
Peace is like beautiful roses blossoming in spring. Peace looks like friendship. It sounds like birds singing sweet songs, and peace can be for everyone, but peace is always here.
Thank you, Ryan.[1554.36][1554.36](Applause). And Millie?
Peace is. Peace is like a flock of free birds. Peace looks like tears of joy. It sounds like happy, free people singing, "Free at last, free at last, thank God almighty, I'm free at last." And it can be hard to get, but peace is always there if you believe.
Thank you.[1577.63][1577.63](Applause). And we'll wrap it up. We'll wrap it up with Nora.
This is peace. Peace looks like a beautiful bluebird singing in the morning sky. Peace looks like friendship with everyone, no matter what color. It sounds like a flute playing songs of joy, and it can be for one and all, but peace is always love and joy.
Thank you.[1603.83][1603.83](Applause). Thank you, boys and girls. I'm very proud of you. Nice job. Thank you.[1610.41][1610.41](Applause).
Mr. Curtis has something for you, the four of you. Hold on.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Cardeman. And, boys and girls, boy, you sure do represent Bissell in a big way, and those poems were fantastic. So, let's give them one more round of applause while they're having a seat here.[1631.13][1631.13](Applause). I can honestly say, I don't remember back as a second or third grader being so poised and being able to express myself as well as these young ones are able to do. We're so proud of them, and, parents, thank you for sharing your students with us. They are remarkable, and it starts from all the way at Wilcox, straight on through the high school. So, boys and girls, thank you for being here this evening. So, now I'd like to ask Mr. King to come forward. He's representing RB Chamberlain Middle School, and there is always something exciting going on at RBC.
All right, well, for our first level of excitement, we are going to start off with our Students of the Month, and I'm going to invite these fine folks to come on up in just a moment.[1674.98][1674.98](Mumbling). Okay, for RB Chamberlain, if you don't mind, I'm going to read this. Students receiving the honor of Student of the Month are recognized for meeting all the six criteria listed below. Each student has to meet all six criteria in order to receive this award, and the grade-level teams decide upon two boys and two girls to be selected each month from each grade. The following are the criteria. The first, they show respect and consideration for others. Two, shows enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities. Three, exerts a positive influence on their classmates. Four, exhibits leadership characteristics. Five, they exhibit patriotism and democratic principles. Six, they show responsibility, such as punctuality with their assignments, being on time to class, and being prepared for the classes. Without further ado, the following students have been selected this month by their respective teaching teams as RB Chamberlain Students of the Month for the month of January. For seventh grade, I would like to invite up the following. Last but not least, for seventh grade, William Koczerak.[1791.21][1791.21](Applause). Last but not least, for 7th grade, William Koczerak. For 8th grade, we have Trinity Wade. And last but not least, Anthony Ziggman, please. How about one more round of applause if you'd like to show your folks your certificates? All right, again, congratulations, and thank you for all that you do for Chamberlain. Now, usually, I try to come up here and have memorized what I would like to share with the community, but if you'll beg my forgiveness, or if you'll forgive me for doing this, I'm gonna read, because I'd like to share some of what Chamberlain is doing for African-American History Month, because it's a lot. We try to integrate it and weave it through a lot of things that we do, but we try to pay particular attention during the month of February. So I'm just going to share a few. 7th grade Language Arts, the "I Have a Dream" speech. There is probably very few speeches that top that one. If you want to look at how to make a moving, powerful speech that captures the attention of a nation on a pivotal issue at a pivotal time, that is transformative for all who hear it. So it's incredible that we can insert that while we're working on public speaking, so it's a great fit there. On 7th grade Language Arts, they're also reading Teen Freedom Fighters, which is pretty cool, because they also work with some of the greats in the Civil Rights Movement. And what's kind of fun there is to keep it interesting beyond learning about the folks. They then have to study up on a person of their choice. Then, the next day, they come in and they're on the hot seat, because then they have to play the newlywed game, being that person. So how well do they know their hero? So it's pretty tough, and it's kind of fun. Moving along, of course, Langston Hughes is studied with his work during the Harlem Renaissance. We also take a look at Song of the Trees. In Social Studies, not only in 8th grade are we working on the Civil Rights Amendments, but in 7th grade, we are also working on the Civil Rights Movement of the '50s and '60s, putting in play many of the Max reading strategies we have been working on. In Science, they work on many of the great discoveries and great attributes of African-American scientists in the various fields of science. In 8th grade Language Arts, of course, we read Ruby Bridges and a very awesome book called Once Upon a Time When We Were Colored. We do an incredible amount of things at Chamberlain, because we want to be representative of the students we have. We take pride in this is something that we do all year. Yes, we pay a little more attention to February, but at Chamberlain, this is part of who we are, so it's not just a single month. We are very proud of what we have to offer. As Mrs. Powers mentioned, next week is Hello Week. And, yeah, I thought about playing a Dell, but, you know. I could sing, but, oof, we want the kids to stay. We have a whole bunch of activities, starting with Monday. Our Language Arts teachers are going to give a classroom presentation, so that with small group discussion, on what it means to say hello. I'm amazed, almost, probably, two or three interactions a month when I talk to a student in the hallway or in a classroom, they don't know the person in the next classroom, or they don't know the person walking past them in the hallway every day. So this is to generate a sense of community, a sense of togetherness. So it starts in the classrooms on Monday. Tuesday, we are going to move it into some other activities with skits, through the announcements, through WRBC. Wednesday, we are doing a green-out. I apologize to Twinsburg being blue, but the color of the initiative, the Sandy Hook Initiative, is green, so we are following them with green. You know, we're not trying to be Aurora or Donia. No, we're good with blue. But, so we're gonna have a green-out, we're gonna do a pledge at lunch, and some activities during our lunches, and then on Thursday, we're gonna wrap it up with some culminating activities for the entire building. So we have a lot going on at Chamberlain, so please feel free to talk to your students about that. And something we rarely do, but I would like, if I could just take a quick moment. Mrs. Powers, that envelope was for me, that was sitting at your seat when you walked in. Many of you know Mrs. Powers as the voice of a snow day, and that captures your heart and your attention. You smile from ear to ear. The board knows her as the one who tries to keep an incredible amount of employees and students together for a great cause. I've been very fortunate, in the short time I've been with Twinsburg, to have her as my superintendent. And three days ago, the state of Ohio decided that I should get my superintendent's license. And it was all because of the help and assistance of Mrs. Powers. She led me through my internship, she gave me her time, energy, and effort, of which none of it would have been possible. So we don't have a Superintendent of the Month, but thank you very much.
That was a nice surprise. Thanks, Mr. King. And it is a bit of work to get that license, so I'm very proud of Mr. King and his efforts in balancing a family and a job and going to school, is an often tough task. So congratulations to Mr. King for his new license. That's great news. Guess I'm in trouble, huh? Mr. Bellwether, that concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. King. Could you bring your license up here so we can hang onto it? Now, I know you need to go rest up for those upcoming days off, so if you do need to get to homework or baths, or really just don't want to stay for the rest of the business meeting. Now, that would be a good time, that, again, it doesn't apply to you for, but now would be a good time.
I guess not. We're all here for you.
What?
He's sad. We're leaving for his presentation.
He's what?
He thought the audience was for him.
We'll put cardboard cutouts in the video with you. Well, Mr. Shibek, if you want to make your way up, I'll introduce Mr. Steve Shibek, former Twinsburg Board Member, but our Board Member, one of two at Cuyahoga Valley Career Center. You have a report for us tonight?
No audience left. Thank you for having me this evening, Board Administration. Just want to share a few things from the month of January at the CBCC, which happened to be a busy month. Of course, we had our organizational meeting. This year was pretty uneventful. We had no new members. With the new appointments and everything, we were all staying on board this year. So we just elected our officers, and I don't know if Mr. Curtis shared with you, we elected him as President of the CBCC Board, so he'll be fulfilling that term this year, and we have lots to do. One quick announcement, there are a lot of things going on at Career Center. For the benefit of our audience, if you check onto the website, there's always a listing of upcoming events. But one of them, I think, that's worth noting, is June 6th through the 10th, we are doing an ACT test prep boot camp, and that'll be held in the mornings. It's gonna be part of the summer camp series, and the focus is on helping students prep for the ACT tests. So those students that need some extra help, they'll be focused, instruction on working on passing their test, and a good opportunity for all the students in our associate districts. And we're limiting it to 24 students, but I'm told that if there is a lot of demand, they will add a second session. So just want to get that out there to the folks. One of the other events we had this month was the illustrious grand opening of the Ramtech Center, and I know some of the Board Members were in attendance. Was a great event. Some great guests we had there, very substantial media coverage, so I won't go into too much depth. The Bulletin did a really nice article on it. We've gotten tons of media coverage, so we're really excited about that. I think the highlight of the evening that I just want to share with the Board is that one of our guests, Jack Schron, who's the CEO of Jergens Incorporated, it's still a family-owned manufacturing business here in Cleveland, which is kind of rare. I think he's third generation. They actually have gotten into the robotics areas. And what they do is they make a high-tech screwdriver that attaches to the robotic arms that we actually have in the Ramtech Center. These screwdrivers sell for about $7,000. Mr. Schron is going to donate one of those to Cuyahoga Valley Career Center, so we can utilize it in our programs. And that was just an outstanding donation, and we really appreciate his consideration of that. So, great event there. And lastly, we had our work session, and a couple things of worth noting out of that. We had a demonstration from our Technology Department on BoardPAC, which is an online board document manager. It's similar to Board Docs, but a lot cheaper. It is live, and it's cloud-based. So the agendas and notes can be generated, actually, the notes are generated during the meeting. The votes are recorded during the meeting, and the agendas are posted online, so you can log in and see them prior to the meeting, and any changes would appear real-time, and everything's archived. You can also access any of the attachments. You can make your own markups and everything, and they'll be saved to your login, and you could share those, but if you want to go back and review notes. Mr. Curtis and I were very impressed with it, and I think it's very cost-effective as well. So I know a lot of Boards are trying to move towards paperless. I would encourage you to take a look at that. I'm sure Mr. Curtis would be more than happy to share it with you. I can't remember the exact cost, but we were just all very impressed with it. We tried a lot of renditions, we've tried Google Docs, we've tried remote access into our own network drive to share things, and I think this is just gonna be a better opportunity, because it's not really related to any particular device. It's accessible in Macintosh or Microsoft. We also did a technology review. We have a new technology coordinator at the Career Center, so he kind of came in this year and did a complete assessment, and gave the Board a five-year outlook on where we were with, as far as technology, and replacements, and capital improvements. So that was very informative. So now we have a capital plan for our Technology Department to work off of. We have some key replacements coming up at our Career Center. Our Executive Director, which is kind of an Assistant Superintendent position, is resigning and relocating to Georgia with his wife. And that was kind of sudden. We didn't expect that. So we have that key role to fill. Our Business Manager will be leaving in July, so we have that role to fill. We were able to negotiate, the Treasurer's position is still gonna continue to be a shared position with Brexwell Broadview Heights, and that will take, contracts and details are being developed now, that will take us into July of 2018. The arrangement is working out very well, and I think part of it is because we have two districts with very strong staffs in those, in that department, both in Brexwell Broadview Heights and the Career Center. And I think the mere location of both of the districts makes it advantageous for a shared position with Brexwell Broadview Heights. So we're looking forward to continuing that relationship, and hopefully, that'll take us through to 2018, and then we'll kind of see where we go from there. And last but not least, I know Mr. Curtis shared an email with you about our levy renewal that's coming up, and that is our one mil levy that is part of the two mil operating, two mils of levy money that we operate on. The one mil is continuing, the one mil is a five-year renewal. The Board is looking into, well, we are going to renew that. We're trying to decide whether to go back with another five-year renewal. This levy originated in 1978, or if we should make that continuing. And the consensus at our work session was that we need to discuss it with all the districts to make sure that we had everybody on board and would be supportive. We are gonna definitely be on the ballot in November, it's just a matter of how we're gonna structure that levy. So appreciate your feedback, so we can take that back to our February meeting, which is February 25th. And that's all I have. I just want to share one thing with you, though. I know you guys continue to struggle with the performance indicators and testing and whatnot, and don't get disheartened. I know it was kind of a disappointment this year, but I think, and speaking as a parent of two former children in this district, this district does an outstanding job with preparing our students, and I don't think the tests really reflect that. And shortly after that article came out, I was very pleased to see that the Honor Roll, or Dean's List for Ohio State came out, since my son still attends there. We had 46 Twinsburg students on the Dean's List, and of those 46, nine of them had a perfect 4.0. So the 46, the remainders were 3.5 and above. And I was extremely happy that my son was in that group. So, I mean, that kind of just speaks to the work we do. And my kids, both have shared with me, they were, never felt unprepared when they entered college, because of the experience they had at Twinsburg Schools. So please, don't let the state performance indicators get you down, particularly our staff. You guys do a great job. So keep up the great work, and you're doing a great job with our students, and always enjoy seeing the Students of the Month. It's such a phenomenal event, and glad we can share that with the public. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shibek.
Just one, add one note. You know, Steve mentioned that we had a couple of openings with the CBCC. There's also adult ed. So we actually have three leadership positions that are open at the CBCC that were, we got our hands full with trying to, you know, making sure we find viable candidates and folks that are capable of continuing the work, the great work that's going on with CBCC. Otherwise, great things. Thanks a lot, Mr. Shibek.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, additional committee reports, anyone?
Although, we have...
Who's calling first?
Curriculum and Technology meeting coming up, I think, eight, six, six o'clock, correct?
Okay, and for Buildings and Grounds, we're gonna be having a meeting on February 16th at 8:30 a.m. at the Board Office. And for Sports, Kathy touched on it a little bit, but this weekend is the TAB Tournament. They are still looking for volunteers, anybody that's interested in helping out. It's a great event. You don't have to have background in wrestling or sports. There are a lot of jobs to do, so if you're not doing anything Friday or Saturday, there's some great opportunities, also some opportunities for community service hours for our high school students. So same thing, no experience needed, lots of jobs that can be filled by different people with different abilities. Also wanted to talk about, I'm gonna hold it up, the Twinsburg Football Program, grade seven through 12. They're gonna be hosting a game show night. It'll be on Saturday, April the 9th. It's at Catered Elegance. The tickets are $35 per person. They have some great prizes. They have a 55-inch flat-screen TV. I know there's some other packages, Vendetti's donating a senior package for senior pictures. There's some, I think, $7,000 worth of gutters, so we have some very good donations, so it's a great event. It's a game show night. Some of the games they'll be doing is, I believe they're doing like The Hungry Hippos with people, so Human Hungry Hippos, they're doing newlywed games. It's a great event. It'll be a fun night, so I encourage anyone that wants to go, let me know. And just wanted to kind of give a shout-out for Twinsburg Rotary. They're, they meet every Wednesday up at Brewster's. Anyone that's interested in potentially joining, I know that we're gonna be doing the Teacher of the Month coming up here, or Teacher of the Year, I apologize. That's an event that they do every year, and it's really nice for one of our teachers will be named Teacher of the Year. And then also, a shout-out to the Chamber. They had the Women's Expo last week. They had record turnout, over 600 people came to that event. So really neat stuff happening in Twinsburg, so kind of wanted to mention some of those things.
All right. Anything else with committee reports? Move on remonstrance? I don't believe we have any placards, so we will keep going, and we will be, I mean, over to H1.
Mr. Bellwether.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're an administrator for...
Oh, we do.
Everyone left.
I'm sorry, Chad. That was sort of on purpose, no. Well, you know, my agenda's all upside down. Go ahead, Chad. I'm so sorry.
Mr. Felber, Board of Education, we were approached by the City of Twinsburg to partner with them, and in the hopes of also partnering with the Village of Reminderville and Twinsburg Townships to develop a grant application for Safe Routes to School. And the City of Twinsburg has had an interest in this walkable town idea. Back when the strategic plan was crafted, I want to say now, three years ago, there was a significant amount of emphasis by Mr. Finch and members of the committee to research that, and so this is sort of the next step. And so, we're very delighted that they reached out to the school district. They recognize that many of our streets don't have sidewalks. Many of the kids can't ride their bikes to school because there isn't safe passing for them, and so they are interested in the Board of Education providing a resolution to support this. But before we can get to that at the next board meeting, I asked Chad to present to you some information about this particular grant application, so that you have an opportunity to consider what we're going to be asked to do, and then take action at your next board meeting. So, without further ado, Mr. Welker.
Thank you. We wanted to provide an overview of the Safe Routes to School program. The Safe Routes to School program was actually formed in 2008, and the objective of the program is to encourage and enable students in grades K through eight to either walk or ride their bike to school. So, basically, through this program, during a school year, you develop a school travel plan. And that school travel plan identifies key issues regarding walking and biking to school, and identifies those issues that are reducing those items, and develops countermeasure recommendations to reduce those barriers. So, there's a strong amount of monies available through this Safe Routes to School program. Historically, they've been 100% funded through the Ohio Department of Transportation, not requiring any match, and so there are both infrastructure and non-infrastrucure improvements. The infrastructure improvements range from anywhere around $200,000 to $400,000 per community, and the non-infrastrucure improvements, you can get up to $15,000 a year. So, in order to start that process, we would apply for a school travel plan, to develop a school travel plan. That application is due on March 6th, and the school travel plan would be developed during the 2016-2017 school year. During that process, we would form a Safe Routes to School team with representatives from both the district and the cities. We would gather information on current student travel, so one, mapping our locations of our students, and primarily that is done for, to figure out population densities of different areas where students are walking and biking from or traveling from. There's also a component of parent and student surveys. So, there's a survey, fairly simple survey, that asks the students whether they, how they got to school for a period of a week. It also has a survey component of the parents, where they identify how they got to school, and then also the reason why they did that. So, trying to also assist with identifying issues, if there's a reason why parents aren't having their kids walk or bike to school. With that information, ODOT representatives also help identify key issues. They do a walk audit, so they walk a mile radius of the, of each K through eight school, and they're looking at whether there's adequate crosswalks, how, the condition of the sidewalks, arrival and dismissal procedures, and also looking at how we're separating parent and bus traffic. So, there's a number of different things that they're looking at. After they identify those key issues, the Safe Routes to School team, in conjunction with ODOT, actually works on developing countermeasure recommendations, and those can be both infrastructure, as far as signage, crosswalks, sidewalks, those different things, or it can be non-infrastrucure measures, such as just promotional activities, such as a walk-to-school day, bike-to-school day, a bike rodeo, which I've had some experience holding myself, but, so those different opportunities to promote walking and biking to school. After we would develop those, the school's travel plan would also be reviewed by a public committee, so there's a public review process. And then with that school travel plan, if you identi -- with the issues that are identified and the countermeasures, you use that school travel plan to apply for the grant funding that's available. So, these are just some examples of the infrastructure improvements that could be funded through this program, so for, specifically with our schools, look, looking at our arrival and dismissal traffic flows, and there could be potential funding for improving those, the parking lots and things like that, to separate parent and bus traffic and walk, help provide a safer path for the walkers to get to our buildings. And then we talked about the crossings, sidewalks, bicycle racks, to have been funded in the past as well, so just different things there. And then the non-infrastrucure improvements that I mentioned before. So, the next steps would be at the next board meeting. We are requesting the Board of Education's approval of a resolution that authorizes us to submit an application that would allow us to develop a school travel plan, and then each city would also consider the opportunity to participate, and potentially they'll be authorizing resolutions before the March 6 deadline as well. So, with that, I just.
So, chronologically, we would need to do our resolution first, and then participation would come from our district municipalities.
Right, right. They can happen concurrently.
I believe all of them are aware of the opportunity.
Yes, I know, I know the city is approaching Reminderville and Twinsburg Township, and gauging their interest in the opportunity as well. So, I know that process is going on.
Are we aware of any programs in our geographic neighbors that may have done something like this?
So, I have experience from South Yucca Lynnhurst Schools. We had a Safe Routes to School program. We, back at that time, we received a half million dollars for financing some of these different measures. I know Aurora has one, Hudson, so there's a number of surrounding districts that have embarked on this opportunity.
Anyone else, other questions?
It's only, it's a mile radius, right?
That's specifically what they're looking at, is they're looking at each K eight school, and primarily focusing on the mile radius of the school.
So, because of all the municipalities that you're engaging, that's why I was asking, you know, if you're going outside of the mile radius, I'm wondering what the rationale is. I mean, I guess you can talk to other municipalities in terms of partnership, whatever, but if it's only going to affect the kids that are within the mile walking radius.
Right, right. It primarily will impact people within, residents within the City of Twinsburg. There may be some, some countermeasure recommendations beyond that mile radius that we might be able to apply for as well, so it's not just strictly limited to the mile, but most of those projects would be within that mile radius.
The one mile is the ODOT walkthrough, so to speak. If it doesn't, you know, keep the other municipalities, other areas to looking at those routes feeding in in mile two or mile three.
Like, how they will ultimately prioritize the different projects that come in is taking a look at how many students that would impact, and that's why they're looking at the population densities as well. So, when we're competing for these, for these dollars, that's one of the pieces that what will probably be considered is, when you look at RB Chamberlain or Dodge, there isn't as much population density directly by those schools. So, that will be one component that will be considered as well, but we still want to see what opportunity exists.
Now, Chad, real quick, the, so the grant money for the infrastructure improvements, is that something the school district would handle, or is that something the city would handle? Because you mentioned two different things on there. Obviously sidewalks are city-owned property, and they've got a sidewalk program currently. So, is that grant money, I guess, then awarded based on the project and then given to whoever would be responsible for it? Or is this something that the district would oversee and funnel that money through the city?
So, it depends on how the partnership wants to arrange that. Typically, one of, one of the two organizations becomes the fiscal agent, and it would run through that, and there would have to be some resolution when we get to that point of designating that.
Okay.
So, but the funds would benefit both the school district and the schools with the different projects that are identified.
All right. Other questions? My apologies for trying to move past you. I know you're so well-prepared that I wrote a note way too close to F on the agenda and missed it altogether. All right, no questions? We did mention remonstrance. I don't think anyone's come up since you started talking, so. Now, we can move on to H1. Treasurers report recommendations and meeting minutes resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of January 20th, 2016, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Terrell Waldron. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and that I'm passed as 5-0. Section I, action items, and without objection from my colleagues, read items one, two, and three together. I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RSC background check. I2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RSC background checks. I3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit, as per the dates, terms, and applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory RSC background checks. Is there a motion for those three as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. I did want to call out, and I just wanted to wish congratulations to bus driver Jane Wagner on 13 years and nine months' service to the district, and she is going to be, her resignation is for the purpose of retirement, so best wishes to her and her retirement. Thank you for, that's a lot of miles in 13, 13 years, nine months. So, thank you for keeping our kids safe for that long. Any other discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
And those items passed 5-0. We're now on Section I, and without objection from my colleagues, I'm going to read one through nine together. Excuse me, yeah, J, rather. J1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a $500 donation from the Summit County Initiative in Akron, Ohio, for the purposes of increasing FAFSA participation, where the funds used to provide incentives for the graduating seniors per the attached exhibit. J2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Shirley Cave in Lakewood, Ohio, in the amount of $75 to be used for the purchase of supplies and materials that will be used in Mrs. Elise Hannah's classroom at Wilcox Primary School per the attached exhibit. J3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from Target One, yeah, out of Minnesota, Scholarship America Field Trips Grant Program, in the amount of $700 to be used to cover the expenses for a field trip to the Great Lakes Science Center for the Wilcox Primary kindergarten students per the attached exhibit. Item four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of Media Center items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. Item five, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education donates $1,500 from the Board's Service Fund through the Twinsburg High School After Prom Committee. Item six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Summit County Inter-Agency Agreement, which each school district is required to have in place with the local Board of Developmental Disabilities Head Start and Help Me Grow program as defined in the Operating Standards of Ohio Schools Serving Children with Disabilities, and this was sent to the board under separate cover. Item seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a reimbursement of $30,000 from the Caihoga Valley Career Center's funds for CTE partnership fiscal year 16. These funds will be used to purchase career technical education, foundation course materials for RB Chamberlain Middle School, and to support STEM career-focused activities and initiatives at the Wilcox Primary School, Samuel Bissel Elementary School, and George G. Judge Intermediate School per the attached exhibit. Item eight, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves revised job descriptions for business manager and assistant treasurer per the attached exhibit, J8. And finally, item nine, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves revised administrative personnel salary schedule and increases the treasurer's administrative experience factor from .11 to .13, effective of the 2015-2016 school year per the attached exhibit. Okay. May I have a motion for those nine as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. And to discussion.
Just to make a note for the CBCC, that $30,000, if you remember, a few meetings back, presented that we used to do this historically for a few years, and because the Career Center ran into some rough times financially, we had to discontinue that practice, and so now we're able to do this again for our member districts, and so we're pleased to be able to do it and be in a position to do it, and we're happy that Twinsburg is able to put this money to good use, especially with respect to supplementing what we're doing for STEM education. So, I just wanted to make a comment in that regard.
Thank you. Again, thank you for all the donations. There's quite a few of them, and good luck at hopefully a safe after-prom, with that money to be used to be for safe, safe after-prom. Mrs. Powers, anything further that you wanted?
Just to expand with Mr. Curtis's comments about the CBCC's CTE funds, we appreciate the partnership dollars. Two things, we have a pre-engineering class at the middle school, so some of those dollars will be spent to purchase some additional modules for the pre-engineering students, and then the dollars will be spent primarily at the three elementary schools to support our Invention Convention initiative that actually helps kids think of unique ways to solve real-life problems, and it's a great opportunity. Mrs. Farthing was telling me that last year, one little one, I think at Bissel, was having a problem with climbing the monkey bars, so she took a pair of gloves and she put glue on the palm and let it dry, and so then it was sticky, and she was able to climb the monkey bars without falling or losing grip. So, those are the kinds of, you know, think about students where they are, children where they are developmentally, and they're just trying to solve a real-life problem, and that's what we're going to be using these dollars for, the Invention Convention initiative, and we had it in a big way at Bissel and Wilcox last year, look to expand it over at Dodge this coming year.
Very cool. Any further discussion, comments on those one through nine? Roll call.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on, J-10, again, without objection from my colleagues, I'd like to read J-10 separately. J-10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a facility use agreement with the American Cancer Society Relay for Life located at 10501 Euclid Avenue, Cleveland, for the use of the Twinsburg High School Tiger Stadium for June 24th through 25th, 2016, as, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a second, I'm sorry, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Terrell Waldron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Abstained. All right, that item passes four-zero with one abstention. And continuing, I am going to read items J-11 and 12 consecutively. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a three-year renewal contract with eSchoolView out of Charlotte, North Carolina, for the use of a CMS website and a CMS responsive mobile site, maintenance, hosting, and support from July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2019, as per the terms and conditions set forth in agreement, as sent to the board under separate cover. And J-10, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the Summit County Public Health Memorandum of Agreement and Business Associate Agreement for the term February 2016 through February 2021, for the purpose of allowing the Summit County Department of Health to use board-owned properties as a public point of dispensing in an emergency as set forth in agreements, as sent to the board under separate cover. Have a motion for those two as read.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solara. Questions? Comments, superintendent, anything? All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes, and that item passes five-zero. We are now at miscellaneous, any of my colleagues, anything?
Just real quick, I had an opportunity to attend the high school showcase Monday evening, and was absolutely blown away by the talent that we have up there, and the opportunities for our students, and what I enjoyed thoroughly the most was the fact that it was a student-run and student-led event, and it really showed, you know, how involved these kids are, and how active they, they want everybody to be, and how much that benefits their education. So that was a, a great event, good job putting it on, anybody involved with that. And secondly, superintendent spoke earlier about the senior bus tour through the schools. Actually had a, a senior who attended the tour stop me over the weekend while I was out, and explain how, how nice it was that we did that, and she's telling all of her friends and hoping for a better turnout next year, so might have to get a bigger bus. So, thanks, again, that's another great opportunity for, you know, the community to see what, what goes on in our schools and, and what we're doing for our children, so thank you.
Anything else miscellaneous? With that, I'll call for a motion for adjournment, I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Curtis, any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron?
Yes.
With a vote of five-oh, we are adjourned, saying good evening.